Driving.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
I'm originally from Peoria, so I haven't been to the cemetery in two years.
Oh.
So I need to go by my grandparents and my mom.
When I go to bed.
At 6:30 PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Renée, could we please have a rule call?
Ms. Williford? Mr. Daniels? Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Bayhan?
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky? We have a quorum.
Going into our consent items, I'm going to read through all the consent items to begin. Item 2, TMP-169, Approval of the June 10, 2021 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. Item 3, COS-2122-1, Consideration of a Norman Rural Certificate of Survey Submitted by Heath and Angie Hirsch with Pollard and Whitehead Surveying Inc. for Cottonwood Flats Estates for 19.931 acres of property generally located on the north side of East Tecumseh Road, approximately one-half mile east of 12th Avenue Northeast. Item number 4, SFP-2122-1, Consideration of a short-form plat submitted by G&amp;G Development LLC through SMC Consulting Engineers PC for lots 1A and 1B being a replat of Lot 1, Block 2, Tecumseh Road Business Park, Section 2, for approximately 1.2951 acres of property generally located at the northeast corner of North Flood Avenue and Tecumseh Drive. And item 5, PP-2122-1, Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by the Uplands Development Co. LLC, CMS, I'm sorry, SMC Consulting Engineers PC for Uplands Edition for approximately 129.9 acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of Indian Hills Road and 36th Avenue Northwest. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, announce which items are being pulled to be discussed in their regular order. Seeing none, I would take a motion.
So move.
Second. You may vote.
Just touch it.
No, the other one.
Pull that one. No wonder it didn't come up.
Everyone has voted, and the motion carried 6 to 0.
Going now to our non-consent items, and to begin with, item 6, O-2122-1, SGA Design Group. On behalf of Walmart 2734, request partial closure of an existing 17-foot utility in Lot 1, Block 1, TSTB Edition, Section 1, for property located at 601 12th Avenue Northeast. I believe we have a staff presentation.
Good evening. Walmart Eastside Supercenter is asking for a closure, partial closure of an easement that will be in conflict with the building. And there were utilities located in that, water improvements. Those improvements have been relocated. New easement has been provided, so staff recommends approval of the closure.
Any questions for staff? Do we have an applicant presentation? Looks like we don't. Any... Oh, we do. Sorry. Jump again.
My name is Sunday Buer. I'm with SGA Design Group. As previously stated, we are in the process of expanding our online grocery pickup service to meet the current demand of the community. And in an effort to do that, we do have to relocate some utilities. And I'm here to respond to any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I would open for audience comments. Just a reminder for anybody who is going to be speaking, there are cards, they used to be green. It looks like they may be white now.
They're tan.
They're tan. Tan. I'm sorry, they're tan now. If you'd like to fill out one of those for us, and then when you come to the pulpit, you will state your name and your address. Everybody will be given three minutes. I would typically opt to let you have your full three minutes to speak. However, if you would like a 30-minute, 30-second, I'm sorry, 30-second alert that your time is coming up, I will grant that for you. Just make sure to let me know you'd want that at the beginning, so I don't necessarily interrupt. The time goes quickly, and when we hit that, I will have to thank you for your comments and move along. So I will tell you, it goes very fast. Okay. On this item, are there any audience comments? Any planning commission discussion?
It seems pretty straightforward.
And a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. Carried 6 to 0.
Moving on to our next item, 7, O-2122-2, Club Car Wash Operating LLC, requests special use for an automobile service station car wash for approximately 1.7044 acres of property zoned C1 Local Commercial District, generally located near the southeast corner of the 36th Avenue Northwest and Rock Creek Road. I believe we have a staff presentation.
Sorry. All right. Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. So we have a request from Club Car Wash Operating LLC for a special use for an automobile service station, which could be a car wash in this instance, at 2331 36th Avenue Northwest. So this is a 1.7-acre lot. It's currently zoned C1 Local Commercial, so the base zoning will remain just with the special use kind of on top of that. The current Norman 2025 designation is commercial, and no land use plan amendment is needed. It is already platted. They're proposing 56% coverage, impervious coverage, and I'll show you the site plan. And then there are no buildings or pavement proposed in the floodplain or floodway, which is on the east side of the slot. So as I said, the existing zoning is C1, and it's the same to the northwest and south. And then there's R1 to the east. The subject tract is currently vacant. To the south is a fitness center. The lots to the north are vacant. To the east is a single-family. And then to the west are some different commercial uses. Sensitive, sorry. All right, here's an aerial, so it's vacant. And then you can see the gym just to the south there. Sorry, I don't know why I'm like double-clicking somehow. This is looking at the subject tract, so kind of across to the east of 36. This is looking north on 36, towards Walmart. Then south on 36. Sorry. Looking west, there's a eye doctor's office kind of on the left side, and then a bank on the right. I don't know what's going on. So here's the site plan. They're proposing one building kind of on the south part of the lot with parking with vacuum bays to the north of that, with two access points that will be shared with the lots to the north. And we did receive one protest letter. So we're at 1.1% protest within the notification area. The applicant is here. They do have a presentation. I'm available for questions, and we forward this for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
So this is just a car wash?
Yes. So our zoning ordinance is from the '50s, and they just had automobile service station. So historically, car washes have been kind of thrown into that use. But if they ever wanted to come with a gas station, they'd have to come back for a new special use.
Okay.
Because they are tied to this site plan.
Could we like update the zoning ordinance and change the...
I wish we could, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll take the applicant presentation.
Good evening, commission. My name's Kirk Daniels with Cochran, the engineer of record for Club Car Wash. When you said Mark Daniels, I about said here, so I just heard Daniels. So I'm glad I didn't do that. But we're here. We had a PowerPoint. I don't know if it's up there. It's really simple. The thing, I think staff did a good job of telling you about the car wash. It is just a car wash. It's a tunnel car wash is what it is, so everything's inside. There are vac bays. There are free vac bays, so as they wash their car, they can come around. There's 20 vac bays with three parking places, one handicap. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
And so there are...
Yep. Left. Okay, there we go. I didn't know how to do that, so my fault. Again, just Club Car Wash here is a site plan. I think you saw the... Staff had just showed you that a minute ago. This is a building, this is looking at the side of the building. The north two pictures are looking at the east and west of the building. And with that, I'd answer any questions.
Vacuums?
Yes.
Where are they?
They would be on the north side of the building, just directly adjacent to the building.
Right on the north side, immediate side, north side of the building?
North side of the building, yes.
The building's on the west side of the lot.
Yes.
And then you pull around, and there's parking on that east side, but that...
Yes. Oh, there's one I wanted to show you. I don't know where it went, I guess. There was one of the renderings. I didn't, I knew I had them in there, but I couldn't figure out why it didn't show up. If you looked, the building is actually on the southwest of the lot.
Right.
And the parking places just to the north of that are vac bays, right in the middle, are the three staff and one handicap. So the bays are just directly adjacent, separated by a sidewalk.
Okay.
And the tunnel, they would actually enter from the east side and exit on the west side towards 36th Avenue.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'd like to move to audience comments. Planning commission discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried 6 to 0.
Moving to our next item, 8, O-2122-3, Cox Brothers Holdings LLC, requests special use for an agri-wetting event venue for approximately 68.8 acres of property zoned A2 Rural Agricultural District, generally located at the southwest corner of 72nd Avenue Northeast and Tecumseh Road. I understand we are looking for postponement on this, so we could just take a motion to postpone?
I move to postpone.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried 6 to 0.
Moving to our next item, 9, O-2122-4, City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, requests special use for municipal uses, including Vernon Campbell Water Treatment Plant for approximately 36 acres of property zoned A2 Rural Agricultural District, generally located at 3,000 East Robinson Street. Staff presentation.
Hi, I'm Logan Hubbell. I'm a planner here. So we have an application from City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, for a special use for municipal uses at 3,000 East Robinson Street. This is a 36-acre lot. The Norman 2025 plan has it as institutional. There's not going to be a land use plan amendment needed. It's currently unplatted, and any portion of the planned solar array or future solar array in the floodplain will need a floodplain permit. So to the north is the Frost Creek Planned Unit Development. To the east is agricultural, as well as to the south is agricultural. And then to the west is unclassified. Yeah, so the existing land use, to the north and east, both single-family residential. To the south, it's vacant and some single-family residential. And then the west is vacant state land. And so here is the site plan with the, for the Vern Campbell Water Treatment Plant with the proposed solar array. And so here's the front of the, you know, what's existing there right now. This is on Robinson Street. This is looking the opposite direction, north. I just skipped one. Yep. This is looking east down Robinson, and this is west down Robinson. And so staff forward O-2122-4 for your consideration.
Any questions for staff?
Yes. Caught you. Solar array, what is that going to be used for?
I'm not sure. I think that would be a question for...
Yeah, Nathan will have to do that.
Yes.
We'll move to the applicant presentation.
Oh.
So we didn't do a presentation because the zoning for the property is taking the existing property in as it's been used and bringing it into compliance with the current zoning requirements. The driver for that is, we're putting a 600-kilowatt solar array there at the northeast corner of the site. Let me go to the map and show that. And that will be used in a net metering concept to offset three large electric meters. And we'll use that to offset power requirements. So we'll reduce our operating costs for the facility.
What percentage of your total electrical needs are going to be provided by that?
Commissioner Beck, I'd have to get back to you with that.
Okay.
That's a good question.
I mean, any, any time you can produce electricity on, you know, I'm thinking about that for my house, so I think it's a great deal.
It becomes more economical on something this scale, because we're able to do a larger array in combination with the other site we're looking into.
Cool.
I'm just curious, what's the cost of this project?
The overall cost for the project is 4.77 million for this site and the site also at the water reclamation facility.
And what's the break-even time that you guys have basically calculated?
It is pretty close to the life of the facility, like a 20-year life. But this also aligns with our, the mayor's climate goals, where we're able to offset some of our electric usage. I won't say ready for 100, but also that same concept where we're able to offset some of our electric usage and use sustainable sources.
And is the city going to be maintaining the solar array? Because I know, I mean, I know how it works, so of course, the contract has to be given to somebody to maintain and...
We are doing...
...sales break and all that stuff.
Yeah, we are doing a performance contract with supplier, the company that's doing this for this, so they will be maintaining it for us on an annual basis.
Okay, thanks.
Good questions.
I just wanted to go back to that answer. You said that the 4.77 million, that is, will be paid back over the 20-year period? Is that correct?
We had capital funding available to do the project, but the return on investment will be in the 20-year period.
A 20-year return on investment, okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any audience comments? Planning commission discussion? I think it would be nice if you have those energy offset numbers for the city council when it goes to them as well. I'll take a motion.
Well, I'll move. I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the most... ...is to 0.
Moving on to our next item, 10, O-2122-5, City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, requests special use for municipal uses, including water reclamation facility, compost facility, and police firing range for approximately 115.0 acres of property zoned A2 Rural Agricultural District, generally located at 3,500 Jenkins Avenue. I'll take the staff presentation.
So we have another application from City of Norman, Norman Utilities Authority, for a special use for municipal uses at 3,500 Jenkins. This is a 115.22-acre lot. In Norman 2025, it was designated as floodplain. No land use plan amendment is needed. It is unplatted, and any portion of the future solar array in the floodplain will need a floodplain permit. So currently, it is zoned A2 and I2. To the north, there's heavy industrial and rural agricultural zoning. To the east, there's more agricultural, as well as to the west. And then to the south is the Canadian River, which is unzoned. So the existing land use is a water reclamation facility, a compost facility, and the police firing range. To the north is the Norman Transfer Station and a Norman Water Reclamation Facility. To the east is agricultural. To the south is the Canadian River. And to the west is Haskell Lemon Construction. So this is the future site plan for the, with the solar array there in the northeast corner, as well as the existing city compost facility, compost scale house, former landfill, water reclamation facility, outfall, and the UV disinfection. So here, this is looking away from the, from the property there on Jenkins. This is looking north down Jenkins. This is south down Jenkins. And then this is a look at the property itself from Jenkins. We did have one protest for this one, which was, it covered 4.7% of the notification area. So staff forwards 0, O-2122-5 for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? We'll take the applicant presentation.
This will be, this is a similar item to the past item where we're bringing the zoning in line with current requirements to do this project. But the addition to this site is, at the compost facility, we would like to put a scale house there so we can better track what's coming in and out, similar to what's at our transfer station. You have scales, take funds, measure the tonnage that's coming in, measure the tonnage that's going out, or measure the net tonnage coming in. So we'd like to install that there at the red square. And then the solar array would be where the green area is shown on the map.
Any questions of the applicant?
What's the capacity of the solar array here?
1.67.
1.67?
7 megawatts, yes.
Any other questions?
What's current, I'm sorry, what's currently occupying that space right now?
There's an oil well up on the north end of the site, but generally, it's open field. And then we do have some sledge drying beds, which had been used by staff in the past for biosols from the facility. They would put them there, let them dry out, and then haul them off. And we also use that for our vector trucks as well, so we're still going to retain some of that capacity.
Do you know what the change to your impervious area will be?
We have not calculated that, but we understand the protest that's been received, and we'll be happy to make sure we mitigate that requirement, that increase.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll move to audience comments. We do have some comment cards that were submitted, so I'm just going to go in the order that I have them. Just one more time to remind everybody, you'll have three minutes to speak. I'm going to start a timer. If you would like me to alert you 30 seconds before your time is done, let me know at the beginning. Otherwise, I would prefer to afford you the full amount of time to speak. So I'm going to start with Allison Wilson. When you come up, you'll just say your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Allison Wilson, and my address is 1004 Elmwood Street. I own some land in the area, and I am concerned about, not about the array, solar panels being done, but what I am concerned about is the impervial surface that will be there and the additional flooding that may occur in the area that's already there. So currently, we have an issue with flooding in the area. There is standing water currently on the, in the area on the west side of Jenkins that we are very concerned about. Adding another impervial surface will lead possibly to this. As mentioned just previously, they don't know what that impact will be. It does also say in the proposal that there is no negative impact. I'd like to know how that was calculated, that there was no negative impact as well, because I am very concerned that there will be a negative impact, not only to our farm, but also to the farm that's closer to that area on the other side of Jenkins, on the east side of Jenkins. And that is the reason that I am speaking tonight, is due to those concerns. Do any of you have any questions of me?
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Ma'am, what negative impact are you expecting from this?
Water, water coming off the impervial surface and going further south and further east off the land. Because currently, anytime it rains, even a half an inch, the area floods. And water runs across both sides of Jenkins, and it can be anywhere from six inches to two feet in flooding in that area, is my concern.
But do we know, have we seen the plan, the designs, that are, are they going to make the base of that solar...
That's what I don't know.
Okay, okay, we can, of course, like ask. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'll move to Kevin Potts. Just again, say your name and your address, and if you'd like the alert, let me know. Otherwise, I'll let you have the full time.
My name's Kevin Potts. I live at 3620 Barwick Drive. I basically oppose it. First of all, I want to say, I don't, I'm for anything that will save the city money, energy efficiency and all that. I'm all for that. But we, my sister Allison here has already spoke on some of the impact we're having. We've been having, so they say, they say in the description that there's no adverse impact. Well, there has been adverse impact before any construction has been built in the special request area, special use request. We've got, currently, we've got stormwater standing on our northeast, it's our northwest 80-acre hayfield. We can't get in there. We can't produce hay. We can't get in there, we can't produce hay, so any, anyway, it's sitting there. So anytime we get that rain, it comes across, so that dugout creek flows through between the trash reclamation, and between that and the, the water reclamation plant and the trash transfer station. All that drainage comes through, passes on the west side of the police pistol training range, crosses, runs south, crosses under Jenkins, ties into Bishop Creek, which drains 10 square meters east central Norman, the central part of that. You know, everybody knows that area, it's a big, it's a flashpoint right now in the city of Norman, what's going on with stormwater. So I just oppose any construction where there hasn't been a stormwater mitigation plan that's going to be in place and that is implemented, because those solar panels are going to create impervious surfaces, any construction, road, access roads, service roads, all that. We've already got problems, and when they do any more construction, it's just going to be more and more water coming in on us. So that was, that's the big reason I'm opposing it, and I would like to see a mitig, a stormwater mitigation plan implemented for that area, because it is impacting us. And that's pretty much, that's all I got to say. Any questions, or...
Thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to Sonya Potts.
Withdraw the...
Thank you. Following that, we'll move to Planning Commission discussion.
Well, my question goes back to that, we, you know, I'm surprised that we didn't have some kind of, on the first one, it said like 50%, 56% coverage. Why that wasn't calculated for this middle today? I feel like we don't have the information that we need.
The, the reason being is the, the panels themselves, yes, like rainfall that hits them, it will fall on the ground, but the ground below it is still going to be impervious. It will still be a natural vegetation, so we're really not adding impervious surface to that.
It's like, well, you pave a road, so it runs off to the side, so, I mean, in my mind, it's still impervious surface that's collecting water and can come off. There should have been a calculation, and there should have been some kind of mitigation plan, because, I mean, they were here last month or two months ago on Eagle Cliff, and the issues there with the drainage off of that residential, and that's a lot more serious. And I know that we didn't pass the stormwater plan three or four years ago, or whatever else, which still needs work, but it would, to me, we needed to have some information That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion?
David, I think technically, we're talking about where the runoff should go, so instead of, can we not divert the runoff to perhaps another area where it's not affecting their farm and already the problem which is currently happening there? I mean, I can totally see that the water is going to come down, but again...
Yeah, I mean, the whole Bishop Creek thing is a mess.
Does this water drain into Bishop Creek?
It, it drains through the, the drainage, drainage channel that runs, runs through here on the west side of the, the property.
That does connect to Bishop Creek.
Yeah.
Bishop Creek is the, the squiggly line you see on the side there, connects to the property. Yeah.
But not there.
So yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to just second, I think we've already covered it, and Dave is pretty good about kind of putting these things all together, but I think we really have seen a massive problem with Bishop Creek that needs to be addressed. I don't know that this is the project that's going to make or break it, but I do think that there's a major issue that needs to be resolved. I mean, the Potts family, and then also, I mean, that, those neighborhoods back there are having massive problems. I mean, the pictures that the HOA showed us previously were very enlightening as to some of those water problems. Maybe even something to do with this former landfill, something that could be a little bit more effectively done with some of that land to help with the Bishop Creek problem. I'd really like to see the city make a plan to help these people with this area of town, because I'd also like to see some of those residential houses be able to be built responsibly without causing some of these water problems for neighboring property owners. So I don't know that this particular project is going to really make a huge impact, but I do think city council will need to know those impervious surface factors, and I'd like to see some drainage reports, even historic ones on there, when this goes to city council for final approval.
I will do.
If this goes to city council for final approval.
I see our city engineer coming up to make some comments.
City engineer. Only thing I'd like to point out is that there is floodplain on this property. This will have to go through the floodplain permit committee, and we will address the drainage in relation to the runoff, and typically, we require compensatory storage, so they'll have to account for that with any project that they do. I just wanted to bring up that information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
And I'll take a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
That concludes our, our consent items. We are now open for miscellaneous discussion. Does the staff have any information for the commission? Do the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make?
Oh, sure. I just want to thank the city council for passing the visitability ordinance that's going to go into, what's the term you use? It will start being used August 1st, which means builders, developers will have the ability and incentive, although small, to build houses that are visitable at least, or maybe accessible. And I want to thank Landmark Homes and Ideal Homes, because they are already working on doing just that kind of thing, so if I could only, no, I better not say anything else, get myself in trouble. So, but I want to thank, thank everybody that participated in that process, because I think that's along with our energy ordinance, we're getting houses now that are much more energy efficient, and now we'll get houses that are visitable and accessible, and will be known as an inclusive community, so hats off to everybody.
Any other comments? If there's nothing else to come before the commission, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.
Because there's two different salad flavors, but this was the one I'm on yesterday.